All right, let's go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting to order, and call a roll, please.
Kirsten is going to call the roll.
Chair Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Albert?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Here.
Commissioner Griffin?
Here.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Kopper?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
That's it.
And we have a quorum. Thank you. There's really not anything significant on our agenda tonight. No, actually, we have a fairly significant hearing. Other than that, that's it. Are there any questions about the agenda, changes, adjustments? We do not have a consent agenda tonight, and we don't have a counselor, so...
Yeah, Counselor Clark indicated that she would not be here this evening.
Right. So, staff announcements. Julia?
My first announcement is sort of obvious, but Kirsten Allen is here. She's our new department program coordinator, and you'll be seeing her. She's going to be attending the Planning Commission meetings and just kind of helping us stay on track with the time and the agendas and all that fun stuff. So you'll see her a lot more, and we're excited to have her. She actually is a longtime employee of the city. She actually came from the Building Department part-time and our Records Department part-time, so she's got the council meeting process down and other departments in the city. So we're excited to have her onboard, and you'll see a lot more of her in the coming weeks, months, years.
Unless anybody'd be concerned, we're not actually related here.
I think at the last meeting, I mentioned that Washington County was holding a Tualton-Sherwood Road widening open house, and they indicated they are not having that on October 25th. That will be rescheduled to a later date, and so I don't have a date yet, but I wanted to make sure that, since we announced it before, we're announcing that it will not be held on the 25th of October. But we will be having an open house for our Town Center Plan on October 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 in this room. And then I also wanted to announce that we received word on Friday that we were awarded a TGM grant for our Transportation System Plan update.
Oh, baby.
So that's exciting, and it's actually been seven years since we last adopted our update, and so it's time to begin that. I think, you know, with our Town Center Plan's a TGM grant as well, so I know from some recent experience that it takes a little while to get through the scoping process, and so it's probably not something that you'll see, you know, in the very, very near future, but it will be something you'll see in the coming months. That's all I've got.
Great. Thanks. Questions for Julia? All right, in that case, that takes us to community comments. This is an opportunity to testify to the Planning Commission on items that are not on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone here who'd like to testify on something that's not on the agenda? Susan, come on up.
Button up.
Button.
There you go.
Susan Claus, 222-11 Southwest Pacific Highway. I had just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the Planning Commission. One is, and I don't know, I'm going to do it right here, but it may have an impact later on, but there's, in the Sentinel Storage hearing that we had, one of the people that testified, he testified and he gave his address as a property that the Langers own, and actually as a property that Matt occupies, Matt Langer occupies. And my problem is, this guy was aggressive toward my husband twice during the hearing in the back, and I just don't want any problems. I don't want somebody here trying to be, start a fight, start an argument, and so I just want it on the record, and this is one of the first times I don't see a policeman here, but I don't want, in these Langer hearings, I don't want stuff going on behind that impacts the hearing. And so, anyway, I printed out the guy's address that he reported at the Sentinel hearing and the property information that it belongs to Clarence and Gary Langer, and I didn't write on here that Matt's the one that's occupying the property. But anyway, it was a totally separate guy, and if he doesn't live in town, he's just, we're supposed to give the accurate information, or if, you know, maybe he, I don't know, maybe he does, maybe he's a tenant of Matt's in his house. So I just want to make that clear. And then the other thing that I have for the Planning Commission, just in the way of, we as a community, I put a letter to the editor-in about our finance director and the position that, and not the director himself, just the criteria for the director. And there was a comment given after the editorial that says, "City officials say that having a CPA designation was not a requirement of employment for the job." Well, I'm giving, I printed out a copy of the employment, or the application, well, it's the candidate profile that the city gave out at the time, and it says right in here that it's required. I'm just trying to set the record straight. I gave this to Ray Pitts before he published the article. I wasn't trying to do anything tricky. I'm just saying, here we are, we have more than $64 million in our budget, why do we have a history major? Why did we not go by our criteria, which is something that we're always supposed to do? So, anyway, I have that for you, too. And my point is, just like with my comments last week, when we had the appeal hearing for the Langer subdivision, we went outside of what was understood of what the appeal hearing was supposed to be, and it was under advice of, not Chris, but Paul Elsner of the Contract Attorneys, to change the format of that appeal hearing. And I just want to note that this is the kind of thing that, if you as a citizen are not plugged in to whatever the staff is going to do or whatever they're going to say, and by the way, this is not a reflection on our new city manager. I enjoy Joseph Gall. I don't think that he was the one that made the comment, and they didn't specify which city official said that this had nothing, the CPA designation had nothing to do with our CFO. But my point is, as citizens, how can you approach in a logical way when you can't trust the information that you're getting, or if the format changes somehow between the announcement of the information you're given and then how it's conducted at the time? It's not fair, it's not right, and it's not proper, and the only way to correct it is to try to find the administrative process to do it, and that's money, that's time, and in the meantime, all you were trying to do is be part of the town, put your comments in, be part of what we're trying to do here. And if we don't have an honest process, we're not going to have an honest, citizen-driven kind of a process that is for our home-rural town, supposedly one of our great big goals and the reason that we changed to a home-rural charter. So we as citizens were directing it, and it's not staff-driven. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify on items that are not on the agenda tonight? Jim, come on up.
Roger James Claus, 222-11 Southwest Pacific Highway. There's going to be more and more information coming out on this urban renewal joke we have in Sherwood. But I doubt that any of you really understand the corruption this process has brought to this town. Too many of you are looking to advance yourself politically or job-wise, and frankly, I think we're chosen for your limited ability to see what was going on. You're aware we use police. Why they call zoning police power is you take a normal activity and you criminalize it. All you've got to do is get a lawyer that's connected politically, which I would call both questionable ethics and ethos, get people who don't know what they're doing, and you get inane, silly, stupid statements that you haven't corrupted the process. This process is now so corrupted, it's impossible to talk about it. First of all, if anybody comes into this town and they talk urban renewal, they go to the staff, and the staff tells them where they can build. It's that simple. And there's documentation of that and documentation of that. If you question it, you're batshit crazy and you're attacked with actual malice outside this format. If you imply for a moment that you don't hear, understand, or give a damn about citizen input, they retaliate by harming your property. If you contribute politically, you can do exactly what this city will prosecute someone else for in a tenth of the degree. And there are so many of you that have got promises from May that you'll be the next anointed one, it's a little sick. Now, the reason I'm telling you this is also, is there's this thing, you can't take forward this brusque, aggressive way when you talk. Any lawyer that says that is both a liar and a hypocrite and being driven by other items. You can publish information, that's the New York Times, you can actually say some pretty bad things about elected officials, that's Sullivan, and right up to the point it appears to be where there's going to be physical violence, you're allowed to do it, that's Brandon Burke. No one says anything different than that, and you never go out with a batshit crazy remark to other attorneys unless you've got something to hide. What you've seen in this town is the total deterioration of proper American planning. Your tax base is going to go to hell because you've shifted to secondary locations, you've paid political gains, and you've taken primary locations that were, would have in the future generated huge revenues, and if sale tax ever come here, this town would have benefited, and it was all done because it was motivated by staff and political decisions to cover up spending the money we had before. Now, I tell you that because we're in the twilight of when that air hits. This is now being talked about in other places, how corrupt Sherwood is, and it is a case study in Kilo versus New Haven. It's a case study of where the state makes up their mind they're going to do something and damn everybody's individual rights. Now, the reason I tell you that is the history of the United States is far more subtle, and years ago I heard one thing, it will have to come back to civil rights violations on individuals for violating these rules. These people that work in the staff can pick somebody out and target them, and they have sovereign immunity. They can use a lawyer that is not a city lawyer, never defines his role, is not an on-staff lawyer, so he can't go to his ethics and complain about it. What you've created in this town is so sick and so sorry, it's pathetic. And I guarantee you, it will get worse before it gets better, because they've got to push this thing through for very, very obvious reasons. The honey pot's going to go away before long, and if you don't get it on track now, they're not going to be able to dip into it, and they well know it. Now, I find it kind of funny, because when I said things like this nine months ago, there were people questioning it. And then a brilliant comment went out, "batshit crazy," and so on, and the people started saying, "Why would anybody say that?" Here's a man's been National Academy of Science, Transportation Research Board, nationally-known author, is making a complaint, and he's crazy? I'll tell you why. The jig was getting close to up, and when you can't win an argument, you start libeling and slandering the other people with Anne Hahn and the Marx. It'd take a secondary lawyer with a poor mind to think of that, but it's always the way.
Thanks. Is anyone else here to testify on items that are not on our agenda tonight? If not, then we'll go ahead and move on to our new business, which is the Public Hearing on Langer Farms Phase 7. Let me go ahead and read the hearing script. Public Hearing on Langer Farms Phase 7 is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. There'll be a staff report for 15 minutes. We'll have then an opportunity for Planning Commissioners to ask questions if any of the staff. We'll open the hearing for public testimony. The applicants will have 30 minutes to split at their discretion between presentation and any time they might reserve for rebuttal. We'll then call on persons who wish to testify in favor of or opposed to the application. They'll have five minutes each. We'll then turn to rebuttal from the applicant, should they have reserved any of their 30 minutes for that. We'll then close the public hearing, and no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. Final comments from the staff will then follow for 15 minutes, and then we'll have, again, questions of staff, if any, by the Planning Commission. We'll then move to discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice that you receive of that date. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. I'll recognize those persons wishing to speak, and questions should be addressed through me. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In deciding whether to approve or deny the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria found in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The written and oral testimony must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria the person speaking believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I'd like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contact, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Anyone need to make a disclosure?
Yeah, I had a discussion with Matt Langer regarding some of the hearings in the past, and it have no bearing on my decisions today.
And did it include information about this particular hearing?
Not about this particular hearing, no.
Other declarations? And does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commission member's ability to participate? All right, in that case, we will move to staff presentation. Brad. Oh, I'm sorry, before you begin, we do have one written request to extend, to continue the written record, and so as we're required to, we will be honoring that, and we'll talk about timing on that as we move through.
Correct. Couple of housekeeping items. Brad Kilby, Senior Planner for the City of Sherwood. Before I start my report, I would appreciate, if you look on page one of your staff report, the second paragraph, the last sentence in that second paragraph should read, "The planned unit development was approved in 1995 without a preliminary plat, although a preliminary plat was recently approved for a five-lot subdivision on the 55.09 acre subdivision, or acre site as opposed to subdivision." And that will clear up that issue. Within your staff report, you have Exhibits A through M. We've received a number of additional exhibits that I'd like to enter into the record now. We have Exhibit N, which is a letter from ODOT, Seth Brumley, a planner with ODOT, that was submitted on September 18th. That's Exhibit N, and I handed it out before tonight's meeting. We have Exhibit O, which came from Charles and Amy Boyle, homeowners in Arbor Terrace at the Homeowners Association of Sherwood. Exhibit P, which I believe you just referenced, is an email from Susan Claus requesting that the record be left open for additional testimony. Exhibit Q is from Jim Haynes at Western Heritage Public Relations. I have not had a chance to review those. And Exhibit R is a letter from Scott Haynes.
Q and R.
No, you do not have Q and R. They were just submitted this evening, so you don't have those in your packet, but we'll submit them as Q and R, and I think Mr. Jim Haynes is here tonight. He might come up and speak. Yeah, and I can pass around Q and R if you'd like, but I do want them back.
See what we can do.
So tonight, before you, is a proposal for site plan. It's file number 1205, and a conditional use permit, 1202. The subject site is, I guess this is the east portion of the Langer property, and it's property bound on the east by Tualton-Sherwood Road, on the north by Southwest Langer Farms Parkway, and will eventually be bordered on the west by the extension of Southwest Century Boulevard, and then at the rear by some underdeveloped industrial areas and DEQ.
Are you sure about those directions?
You know, Sherwood's kind of a funny place. It sits in the map, kind of funny, but I am. Tiger's east of us. So tonight's proposal was to construct a shopping center on 19.82 acres, and includes six buildings ranging in size from 3,500 to 10,760 square feet, and an anchor tenant of about 145,000 square feet. It also includes a conditional use request to allow an outdoor sales area on approximately 30 parking spaces. And finally, it's requested approval from the city engineer of a street modification for a wider, curb-tight sidewalk with tree wells along Southwest Century Boulevard. I'll get into a discussion of Southwest Century Boulevard in a moment, but it's one of the proposed mitigation measures. And here's the site plan. There are two site plans, and I'll go over that here as we're discussing it. Your anchor store sits at the back of the site up here, it's 145,000 square feet, and then along Southwest Tualton-Sherwood Road and along Southwest Langer Farms Parkway are the other retail establishments. They provided two separate alternatives on the site plan. One, because this area up here is in question, they actually have approval from Target to allow this Stormwater Quality Pond to be moved. They're in the process of studying that right now. This retail building here, my, or I'm sorry, this is, I can't believe, I can't see if that's fast food or retail. If it's fast food now, one of the options would be for that to be a retail, and I think that's building A. And then the second one down here would be, right now it's a drive-through bank, and there is an option for that to be also a retail without the drive-through. Here's your alternate site plan. So again, here is the Stormwater Pond that is, currently exists. It's under the BPA power line, so they're really limited to what they could do in there anyways, so, but they could use the parking. And then the retail options for those two buildings, A and C. On the corner down here, northeast corner, for lack of a better word, there's a, proposed to be a restaurant of about 10,000 square feet, and then all of the other spaces are proposed to be, in the case of A and C, a drive-through bank and a fast food, retail fast food vendor, for lack of a better word, and then all the other would be flex retail space. I'm just going to go highlight, I think you've all read your staff report. I hope it was only 69 pages. Plenty of late-night reading, but the traffic, this particular development is expected to generate approximately 8,070 new daily weekday trips. They are subject to the Capacity Allocation Program. Bob Glaude, the city engineer, has studied that, and with the information that they've provided, they have 760 PM peak traffic trips, and they're allowed to have up to 847 PM peak traffic trips, and that equates to 43 net trips per acre, which is what the standard is for the Capacity Allocation Program. Part of their traffic mitigation was outlined in the developers' agreement for the overall planned unit development, and that included the extension of Southwest Langer Farms Parkway north from its current termination at Tualton-Sherwood Road all the way up by Home Depot to connect to Pacific Highway. It includes an extension of Century Boulevard. This one's already here, and the cul-de-sac's already here, so it would extend Century Boulevard. That modification that was requested would allow curb-tight, wide sidewalks on both sides of the street, and street trees would be placed in a tree well. The city engineer is supportive of those modifications. It also includes frontage improvements along Southwest Tualton-Sherwood Road. The applicant worked with the county, and they'll get into this, about paying a fee in lieu of, because the county's about to do an M STIP project that would widen Tualton-Sherwood Road at its intersection with Roy Rogers and Highway 99. And so, as opposed to going out there and breaking up the street twice, they would pay a fee in lieu of to the county, and the county would make the improvements. It also includes removing this pond, the target water quality pond, and moving it over to the water quality facility, as well as handling all the treatment here for the water quality treatment. ODOT has requested two additional mitigation measures, and that is to lengthen the storage distance on the northbound right-through lane at Southwest Sherwood Boulevard, so that, as you're coming into Southwest Sherwood Boulevard from Newburgh, to lengthen the northbound right-through lane. There is right-of-way, adequate right-of-way there, and it would probably amount to just striping because the pave width is already there. And then lengthen the storage distance on the northbound left-turn lane at Southwest Roy Rogers Road. And Seth Brumley is here tonight, I believe. Seth is here from ODOT, so he can respond to any comments that they might have.
Those are both with respect to 99W, right?
Yes, sir. Parking required, parking, as you know, is based on the use, and within their calculations, and I support their calculations, they would be required to provide between 896 and 913, and the variety is in there to speak to the two different options that they've provided on that retail and bank versus, I'm sorry, fast food and bank versus retail space. They're proposing between 829 and 889 spaces. That does not include the 30 parking spaces that they're proposing in their conditional use permit to use as an outdoor storage area, so when there are outdoor sales there, when there are not outdoor sales going on in those areas, then those additional 30 spaces would be available for parking as well. The code allows a, up to a 25% reduction for developments that have multiple uses on the single site, shared parking, and it allows up to 25% reduction. With the numbers that they've proposed, it's anywhere from 1.3 to 9.2% reduction, and it would be acceptable. I just, the bottom there, average proposed range is 4.4 to 4.6 spaces per 1,000 square feet of leasable area. Our minimum parking standard for a retail establishment is 4.1 spaces per 1,000 square feet of leasable area. And I would also just add, because I'm an advocate of lower parking rates, that we establish minimums based on the worst-case scenario, which is usually the day after Christmas, so it's plenty of parking. Landscaping includes a perimeter and interior landscaping of up to 12.2% of the entire parking area would be landscaped. They would also landscape the visual corridors along Southwest Tualton-Sherwood Road and Southwest Langer Farms Parkway, which are required along arterias and collectors, and their site amenities include pedestrian plazas and outdoor seating areas. Staff recommends approvals of development subject to the analysis, findings and recommended conditions of approval found in our staff report, and I'm available for questions should you have any.
The condition that ODOT recommended, is that already included in the staff report, or would we need to consider and add that?
It is. So, the letter that you've received from Seth, subsequent to those conditions being imposed, we asked ODOT to look at some revised numbers that Kittleson had put over, and it's more of a timing issue, because the timing of the M-Tip program that the county's going to do may be different than what the development would occur at. They're probably within a year of each other, and maybe less, but because the timing was off, ODOT wanted to assure that the proposed mitigation measures on Highway 99 would be constructed prior to occupancy, so that that facility has enough storage and capacity. Really, the frontage improvements along Southwest Tualton-Sherwood Road are frontage improvements, and I'm not sure that they wouldn't include another lane unless the county plans to extend that beyond Southwest Langer Farms Parkway. What it does include is establishment of curb, gutter, sidewalk, planter strip.
And could you maybe go back to the Transportation Improvements map, and help me understand the relationship of the M-Tip improvements and what's being talked about here? Where will it be, where will it be three lanes, two lanes, three lanes, as, once both of those projects are done?
Good question, and I can't truly speak to it. Maybe somebody that's more involved, I wish Bob was here, he would be much more versed on it. on it. But the widening is proposed to happen up here between Southwest Langer Farms Parkway and Highway 99, and then it's supposed to extend beyond that to Roy Rogers Road, and then it'll widen back, or it'll go back down, narrow down past Hunter's Ridge, is where the improvement will narrow back down to. Julie, do you know? Tom?
Sure. Tom Passamere, so right now, the project is still in development, so they haven't made any final decisions on what the extents of the project are, but what they have publicly been talking about and considering is extending the Roy Rogers portion of that road past Porters a little way, and then, so adding an additional lane from 99W to Porters, and then going back to one lane after that point, and then on Twelton Sherwood Road from 99W going back. They haven't determined how far they can go back, they have a certain amount of money, and so they're determining how far that will go. They expect to get all the way back to Langer Farms Parkway, and they're hoping to get further, but it'll kind of depend on some of the mitigation measures and other things that they determine as they're going through the project development.
And are those discussions, are they aware that this site currently would be, would allow big-box retail, or do we get into one of those arguments about, well, we want to improve the road, and then Sherwood went and blew it by approving big-box retail and soaked up all the?
No, there's been a significant amount of coordination between the city developer and Washington County, and obviously, if there's going to be a fee in lieu of, along with the MTTIP funds, they clearly understand what the purpose of that is for, so they're thoroughly aware of the development potential out here and the improvements.
Other questions for you, Stan?
Yeah, follow-up on the transportation question. With that, when they were talking about this, and with that improvement coming up, was that included in when they were looking at the TIA impact of, because it looks like, I'm referring to Exhibit D, page 306, they talked about development, the TIA evaluation was based on the shopping center for the number of traffic that was going to come in, what'd he say, 8,070 and stuff? When they're making those evaluations, were they making on the current streets improvements, or are the future street improvements that we're looking at?
I'm not that familiar with the TIA. Jason, you probably either answered that question, or we also have our traffic engineer who could handle that, if that's a question now, or if we want to?
Yeah, this is Jason Waters, civil engineer with the City of Sherwood, I'm filling in for Bob Golotti, but the ODOT conditions for the storage length and the acceleration lanes are based on existing conditions if the county did not do their project. So we did evaluate the development day of opening without the county five-lane project, and we also evaluated it with the county's five-lane project. So we did look at reassurances to day of opening without the county project being completed. Does that answer?
I think so. And also, and to follow up on that, Brad, you mentioned something about the maximum, cap, 760 trips versus the maximum of what, 890, or what, 840?
876.
876, okay. What if the other property that is a little further, was that south? Is developed, how, that was developed at the same time, would that impact, how would that impact the traffic flow, and how would those numbers change?
They would have to provide a separate traffic impact analysis, and I'm just going to go back to the vicinity map here, because what you're talking about is this area here that will remain undeveloped as part of the PUD. So this is the Sentinel Storage. This is the other phase of Langer, this is actually two phases of Langer's family PUD, and then this site. If this site came in to develop, is that what you're asking, if this site?
Yeah, will that exceed the allowable?
No, they're still limited in the same sense, so the way that the planned unit development language was amended in 2007, it allowed the Langer family to conglomerate their trips, I guess, also for, on 55 acres. The cap is, you're allowed 43 PM net trips per acre. So they have 55 acres, so they have an allotted amount of traffic that they can put onto the roadway for the PM peak. And what happens is, is every time they come in with a development, they have to provide a traffic impact analysis to let us know what kind of traffic it was going to generate, and then what the traffic, the PM peak trips were going to be. And so they are under what would be allowed for the 19.8 acres. The remainder of that will shift down to the remaining 55 acres. Now, that's not to say, though, that, that just means that they meet the capacity allocation program. That's an agreement between the city and ODOT that says, this is how much traffic we're going to put onto Highway 99 over the foreseeable planning future. And then, that doesn't mean that they wouldn't have to mitigate and do additional mitigation measures if they impacted the intersections that were studied, and, you know, a development down here is going to impact some of the same intersections that a development right here is going to impact. So they have to look at what the traffic generation is going to be, what it's going to, how it's going to impact those intersections, and if it drives it below an acceptable level of service, then mitigation is kicked in. And there is acceptable levels of service, I believe that within the city it's D, and if you drop low level of service, D, it's either D or E. If you drop below those two, then you're going to have recommended mitigation measures from your traffic consultant, and the city can weigh in on that. If you drop it below level of service F, then there's clearly going to be mitigation required, and then that would have to be determined by, again, by the engineering staff as to how those impacts can be mitigated to bring that back down to an acceptable level of service. Hope that answers your question on that.
Yeah, it does. So one of the comments made in that paragraph, you know, they use the evaluations based on a shopping center, ITE Code 820, and one of the comments that was made, if there's any changes in the anchor store tenant classification, such as a discount supermarket or a discount superstore, that results in increase in trip generation values above the aggregate value calculated in T, it will not be permitted, so.
So let's talk about that. Two things that I want to speak to on that. First, the elephant in the room. A lot of people are really upset because they have chosen not to name their anchor tenant. They're not required to name the anchor tenant, they're required to tell us what the use is, and we have to base it, we have to base our decision on what that use is and what the decision is. They know full well what they're going to be building there. They have anticipated that this question would come up, and they have, and I think their traffic engineer will speak to it, if not ours would as well, they have adjusted the numbers to account for the other designations that it could potentially be a discount store or a discount standalone discount store, standalone super-discount store, and they have adjusted those numbers from the shopping center data to account for an increase in that. So I suspect that they're going to want to speak to that. It's certainly an issue that staff has raised, and we have discussed with them at length, and we are prepared to, I think they're going to request a continuous to allow us to finish working through those issues as well.
So the numbers that we got from the TIA evaluation, was it adjusted numbers, or just the?
They were the adjusted numbers. They were the adjusted numbers. So what we've asked them to do is to justify that, is to show us the, actually, what we've asked them to do is show us the data in layman's terms in a way that you or I could pick it up and look at it and say, oh, okay, this is what they've done, and this is what could happen under these other worst-case scenarios. And so, that's what we're asking of them, and I think that they're prepared to do that. They're confident that they can do that as well.
I'll call you in just a second. The layman's terms, I think, is super helpful. I know as I'm sitting here thinking about the traffic, I know what I know, and I know that if it's rush hour, I sit at the light at Twelton Sherwood Road and 99 through at least two cycles, if not three. And so in lay terms, I wonder what will this do to that, and what's being done, you know, what would it do if we didn't do anything, and what will the improvements that are made do to not address the current circumstance but not make it worse, because my, you know, my common sense, lay perspective would say this will make it worse absent significant investment.
I suspect that they'll try and speak to that as well, and I think, you know, there's a lot of things that we need to realize, that it's not only, you know, building more roads or widening lanes or adding more storage, it's also about timing of signals, trying to anticipate and forecast how people are going to move through a system. So a lot of traffic study and analysis is based on empirical data from around the country, and based on their own experience of going out and doing independent traffic studies. But when it comes down to it, every individual is himself, and they're going to do different things, but they can draw, like, parallels between people's activities on these types of shopping centers, for example, and expect, and know what to expect, how people are going to go given the existing systems. And so the traffic engineers on their side will propose mitigation, will review that mitigation, and our traffic engineers review that mitigation, and they say, yeah, we agree with that, or we don't agree with that, and then Bob has to try and boil that down to something more layman's turn. And I think, you know, we're attempting to do that for you guys as well as the public, because I think traffic is a big issue for most people that are going to testify tonight. And I think, again, like I said, we've talked to the applicant at length about this, I think that they're prepared to provide that information and that data, and I'm confident that we can come to some sort of resolution. As to whether or not you sit through that cycle once, twice, you know, three times, that is, again, a level of service issue. And unfortunately, I mean, some jurisdictions are better at it than others, and about signal timing and intelligent traffic systems, and I can't speak to that, I just don't know what Sherwood's been fitted for.
Russell?
Speaking of traffic, so I want to go back to Mike's question. If we approve the application and as a shopping center, traffic classification, and then it turns out to be a freestanding discount superstore, how does that, what does the city do? Do they go back to the developer and say, oop, that's going to change your classification? What recourse does the city have if it turns out to be something that?
Well, I guess that's what we're trying to get to now.
So it's possible the developer will speak to that?
Yeah, exactly. And what they're saying is, is that we did it, we did the study under a shopping center, but it accounts for if we put in a standalone super-discount store. We've used a bell curve that, for lack of a better word, I'll let them speak to that.
Yes, okay. The other question I have is, in ODOT's recommendations, when they talked about lengthening the queue lines, the right turn off of 99 onto Twelton Sherwood Road, and was it the left turn onto?
Roy Rogers.
Exactly, right. So I'm trying to nail down the payment in lieu of money, so if that gets paid, does that mean those queues don't get lengthened, or those get done no matter what, and then the other stuff along Twelton Sherwood Road happens later? They don't have to do it, they wait for the county to kind of?
So a couple thoughts on that, and to see where you're getting at there. We've also discussed, the county has to be comfortable with bringing in those improvements into their project, and I don't know what kind of discussions the applicant has had with that. City staff has talked about, we doubt that they would entertain an option to bring in the queuing length at Sherwood Boulevard, but they might be able or willing to do it at the time that they're doing the improvements on Roy Rogers and Highway 99. But the fee in lieu of right now is only for that portion of their frontage improvements along Twelton Sherwood Road.
So probably then, you're saying that in order for this to open, to be built, they're going to have to do the queue lines anyway?
ODOT has requested that.
They've kind of said that's what we want to have done, regardless?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. That's all I have on traffic. I have questions on other stuff.
John?
I do have another question regarding the traffic study. For instance, if there was a situation where, or in the traffic study, is there? Can you hear me? I don't know why my voice is so, okay. In the traffic study, is there an evaluation on existing roads where they might be used for alternate routes in case the road might be temporarily closed due to an accident or some type of emergency?
They do include crash data, and I, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not going to be able to answer that with any specificity, but I will tell you that what they do is they look at the existing system as it is today. They forecast where traffic is going to go. For example, you might ask, why are we even looking at the intersection of Sherwood Boulevard and Twelton Sherwood Road? Well, people who are locals who may not be coming, who aren't coming from out of the area, might use a route where they go down Century Boulevard to Sherwood, and then cut across and come back over Porters through Roy Rogers. So a lot, there's a lot of different routes that people can do. But what they try and do is they try and forecast the most convenient and immediate routes, and they look at existing capacities, and then that's where the mitigation measures come from. Oh, well, for example, at the Sherwood, Highway 99 and Sherwood Boulevard, well, there's going to be more people coming and going to the stores, that shopping center, so they're going to come in, and they're going to come down Sherwood Boulevard and cut over on Century, or come down and even go up Oregon Street. And so they do look at that, and that's part of, when we scoped their traffic study, we asked them, we look at the intersections where we think or anticipate there will be impacts, and that's what they are asked to do. And for scoping the traffic study, it's not limited to city streets, it's opened up to the county and ODOT, so we didn't just decide we're going to just look at these intersections. We coordinated with both the county and ODOT and said, this is what they're proposing, because they had a pre-app a while back, and what, they, their traffic folks talked to the county's traffic folks and ODOT's traffic folks and said, what intersections do you want studied? What travel routes do you want studied? And that's what the applicant has prepared and provided to you in the traffic study.
Other questions? You got questions on things that are not transportation?
I have another traffic question that just came up. So has ODOT indicated that, I mean, it seems logical that if this project, you know, moves forward, that they might do some magical adjustment on that light from Twelton Sherwood Road to 99? I mean, they have to take all that into consideration when they program those things.
Right, and I think that the county is also going to when they do their MTTIP program. And I should mention that the MTTIP program, it's a funded program, so, I mean, it's a funded improvement, so that's going to happen, it's just a matter of timing. But I'm certain that they will be looking at that. And I don't know if I added, or that I indicated anything, but there will also be a signal placed at the extension of Southwest Langer Farms Parkway and Highway 99 to?
And who?
I mean, I'm sorry, Twelton Sherwood Road.
Who's going to control that? The timing on it?
The county, it's a county facility, Twelton Sherwood Road, it's a county facility.
So I want to pin you down further on the answer to Russell's question about the timing of the ODOT light. Will ODOT be changing the timing of that light as, at the same time this project is built?
I can't say with any certainty, no, I mean?
Can the person from ODOT come up and answer that question?
Seth?
And I think the range of acceptable answers are yes, no, or I don't know.
It's got to be up.
If you give us your name for the record, that'd be great.
Seth Brownlee from ODOT Planning. My answer is I don't know, but I do know that the signals along 99 are coordinated, and I believe the county has an interest in doing some coordination along Twelton Sherwood Road. So there's going to be a lot of thought put into how it's all going to work. I'm not on that project, so I'm not aware where they are, and they're thinking about that, but.
Were they going to remove the light at Baylor when they put this new light in? Wasn't there a conversation about that?
I'm not sure, I think the county's still trying to pin that down.
So that's a possibility, that they might still remove that light at Baylor?
Do you know, Tom?
Wasn't there some conversation about that earlier? When they moved?
Yeah, they're still looking at what signal configurations they may change. I don't think the light at Baylor is something that's currently on, it's a conversation, but certainly, they've been talking more earnestly about the light going into the theater and into the Alversons potentially, as maybe moving that and then improving Baylor. But those are just conversations that are happening. You know, I think what Seth was referring to is, it's actually a different project, which is also MSTIP-funded, which is their advanced traffic signal system that they're doing. They've done a portion in Twelton, and they have monies allocated to do a system from Teton all the way through Sherwood, and they're currently working with ODOT to determine whether or not they're going to be able to tie that signal into that traffic system, and if they do, then obviously, there'll be adjustments to that signal, which will be happening real-time because of the adjustments to that signal, which will be happening real time because of the system. And I think ODOT also has allocated money to do a stretch along 99W through here as well as a separate project. So they're continuing to work on that. But that's a totally separate project, has absolutely nothing to do with this application, so.
Well, but so that means that as we consider this application, we should be assuming that no conditions about the operations of the lights on 12 and Sherwood and 99 change, right?
Yeah, I would think that you can assume that there will be changes to signals on lights in everywhere in Sherwood as they're necessary, as they can be done. I mean, we're talking over a long period of time.
Yeah, but I mean, I've been doing this for a long period of time. And the answer has typically been, yeah, the light on 99 is bad, but ODOT controls it. They don't want to change it.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is there are conversations going on about how to best develop that with the new technology that's coming in and the new systems that are proposed.
With the timing on that?
Could the answer to those conversations be, yeah, it turns out we don't want to do it?
They could be anything. I have no idea what the answer to those questions is.
You're so negative tonight, Pat. What's up? I'm just kidding. That's a letter to the senator, to your representative, isn't it? That's about all you can do.
I have just a clarification question, I guess, for Tom, when you were talking about the plan for the mistip funds, hopefully going as far as Langer Parkway, if the money lasts that far?
Yeah, I think they're pretty committed to going as far as Langer Farms Parkway. I'm not sure how far past that they might go. I mean.
Aren't we talking though about, aren't we talking about giving them fee in lieu from Langer Parkway passed? Isn't that what we're talking about? Them not developing that part right there because it's subject to this change, but you're saying maybe the funds won't get them that far?
No, I think the proposal is, the county mistip is doing it to Langer Farms Parkway. They're doing a fee in lieu of to take it past Langer Farms Parkway along the frontage.
Oh, they will.
But I can't tell you that the county might even be able to do it farther than that. They might be able to go down to DEQ or to Cyple or.
So they're saying?
So they haven't figured out what, how far they can go. But they're pretty confident they're going to get to Langer Farms Parkway.
Just to follow up on that, the county, if you go to their webpage, has some of the options published for that. And right now they're showing the frontage in front of the subject property is having the taper lane actually taper down from the five lanes to the single lane in front of DEQ in front of this property. So this would be a taper zone. And that's, that's why they're not using the in lieu fee to add a full five lanes because you would just stop it abruptly. So they have to pick a zone where they're going to taper it back down. So it would basically take the same situation that's in front of the Red Robin and push that over to the northeast area of the subject property.
Okay.
But again, it's in flux with the county project.
Other questions on traffic or any other?
I have one other exhibit to enter into the record. Exhibit S is a letter from Casey Overkamp, who's in support of the project. And he had to leave early, so he wanted to leave his testimony with you.
Other questions for staff? Is that a question or just a random?
I have a question about, what exactly are those 30 parking spaces going to be used for? Because I think I read in the description that this big building has a garden center. So.
Outdoor sales area.
As, okay.
Like a sidewalk sale, Christmas trees.
So it's not like a permanent thing. It's like, we reserve the ride at different times of the year to rope off, fence off.
Those 30 spaces.
Whatever, those 30 spaces. And every time they, if we grant this conditional use permit, they can do whatever they want? Or do they have to coordinate it? Or how does that, once we say yes, then they can do anything they want?
They can do it anytime they want. I mean, they could do it year round if you issued a conditional use permit.
And if we say 30, then it's only 30.
It is, that's what they've proposed.
I'll be counting. Just telling you, I'll be out there.
It's in your.
And it doesn't move around. It's always in that same spot.
Correct. That's where they've proposed it. Now, that's not to say that they couldn't come in and request a.
Right.
Temporary use permit?
Sure.
Okay.
So those 30 will then not include the accessible spots, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
Other questions? John?
Yeah, regarding the amount of parking spaces, that's not including the, is that on?
It is.
All right. The carts, the cart corrals, those were not included as part of the parking?
No, they have the cart corrals. If you look at your site plan, designated on there, and they were not counted towards parking areas.
Other questions? In that case, let's, while we ask the applicants to come up, because that's next, if anyone wishes to testify tonight and you haven't already, do fill out a blue testimony form and hand it in. And meanwhile, we'll ask for whoever representing the applicants that's here tonight to come on up and consume such time as you may.
Matt, which one do you want first?
Let me just go with the main.
Right is going, and then the top red is a laser light.
Don't point at anybody's eyes.
Do you got me on the, okay. Everybody's having fun with this button tonight, so I'm going to make sure. Good evening. Can you still hear me now? My name is Matt Grady with Graymore Development. Address is 19767 Southwest 72nd Avenue, Suite 100, 12 and Oregon. I've packaged a presentation which kind of hits on some of the design aspects of our project, which haven't been talked about tonight. A little bit on the public improvements, not a lot on the traffic. And so I've got about a 15-minute presentation I'd like to walk through. And then I'd like to be able to save that time for rebuttal and then also have time to answer questions, which I've got a pretty good consulting team with me here tonight to answer pretty detailed questions. Anything you've got, we should have an answer for it. So would that work for you guys? Okay. So I'm going to start up here. First of all, Graymore has been in the business for doing shopping centers for quite a while, 27 years, I was reminded today. And we've got a long history working with the Langer family, who are the owners of the property. We were involved with the Langer Farms Shopping Center with the Albertsons, must have been 15, 17 years ago. And happened at one of the centers, you guys were looking at saying that landscaping looked pretty good on that shopping center. What did they do there? And we've also been involved with the Target Langer Farms Marketplace with the outlying stores around the Target store. And more recently, we've been involved with just finishing up the Wilsonville Old Town Square project in the city of Wilsonville, right off of I-5. We've got another one, Progress Ridge Town Square, which has opened up in Southern Beaverton, which has the home of entertainment, Big Al's, CineTopia, as well as New Seasons. We've also done Lakeview Village and Lake Oswego. We live here locally. We're proud of what we do. We've got quite a bit of experience. And with us tonight, I have a very experienced team. So behind me, I have Thailand Schmidt Architects, which is Frank over here. And I've got Harper Hoffer Gellis doing planning work for us. We have AKS Engineering and Forestry, Alex Hurley's here with us. Chris Freshley Architects, he's with us here tonight. We have MKE and Associates, who's involved with the mechanical electrical plumbing, including site lighting. We also have Chris Bremer from Crittelson and Associates for Traffic Engineering. And we have Seth King, who's our land use attorney, who's with us, probably the only guy with a tie. Again, they're all here to actually answer questions for you. And I'm going to move into the next slide, which is kind of a double hit. I'm going to move straight into a colored site plan for you on a bigger scale. And again, this is the PUD Phase 7, 19.8 acres in size, 191,190 square feet of building area. And it's broken up into pieces, obviously. We've got six commercial buildings, which on this map, my map is actually got 12 and Sherwood Road on your left, which would be to the north. Century Drive to the right, which is on the south. Langer Farms Parkway, which is on the west. We have the anchor store, which sits to the east, eastern portion of the project. And we are working with a potential anchor tenant now. And we're working through a due diligence period. And if and when the contingencies are all accepted and released, we're more than happy to tell you who they are. And at this point, we don't have a deal signed off. And we're not ready to tell you who it is. And it's bugging everybody, including sometimes ourselves. Sometimes we just keep working on the good design, making sure we meet the criterion of approval, right down to the last trips generated on the roadways. And we've got some great looking projects, which you can actually look at today to actually see that as a test. Related to our site plan is we've got the fast food pad up on 12 and Sherwood Road, which is what we call Pad A. And it could switch to a retail store should we not get the right user there. It would be a retail store of about 4,000 square feet in size. This one is 3,500 square feet in size. We provide alternates for you guys in our package. On the corner, the prime corner, we've got a 10,000 square foot restaurant building. We don't have the restaurateur here, but we hope that they will be coming. We've got some ample space with plazas right on the side of them so that they can actually have places for people to hang out along the corners of the whole project and in the exterior. Moving down along Langer Farms Parkway, we have Pad C, which is considered the bank pad, which could also be swapped out for a retail building of about 4,900 square feet. And then moving on, we have three buildings which look larger in size, and they are larger in size. And they'll be broken up into multiple pieces with tenants ranging anywhere from 800 square feet to maybe 12 to 2,600 square feet in size. And we're, we don't know the names of tenants. We're working with brokers who are ferreting around, trying to tell people this project is coming along and it's taken a long time to get here. So we're glad to be in front of you guys. The next thing I want to move to is site circulation. That was one of the things that's been talked about. This map is tilted a little bit, just to make sure that we all know that it's not quite centered. It was bugging me when I put it together. But anyway, three colors. You have light blue. And light blue demonstrates where the main truck patterns will be at the far eastern end of the property, coming off of Century Drive. And there's a turnaround area big enough for the trucks, 65 footers and bigger, to actually make a turn and come back and come back out on Century Drive. So the idea is to keep the trucks away from the front of the store, from coming in off of Langer Farms Parkway and coming right through the whole center. And one being potentially a safety issue and getting around curves and turns. In the green, we have a dash pattern, which is shown. And that dash pattern is shown for the main vehicle circulation routes. Obviously, cars can go anywhere where there's drive aisles. But we've got one access coming off of Langer Farms Parkway. We have three of them, two of them used primarily for vehicle access coming off of Century Drive. Pedestrians on this map shows up as kind of, it should be red. But I'm going to point it out, there's two pedestrian access points coming off of 12 and Sherwood Road, leading to both the buildings. And as you walk around and come down 12 and Sherwood Road, we've got another six connection points, which directly connect into the project's site. And they're spaced about 160 feet apart relative to, when you think about connections, a city block is 208 feet in a standard city block if you're downtown in Portland. So they're tighter than a city block. And we've got six of them coming off at key points to get into the stores and get to an internal walkway, which runs right across the storefrontages along in this parallel to Langer Farms Parkway. We've got two more access points, which come in off of the corner of Sherwood, I'm sorry, Century Boulevard, and one more, which aligns up here with Building F on the north side. And then we have one more, which comes right across the entire frontage of the anchor building. And then it leads actually to two main spines, which we have about 250 feet apart from each other. These are two main pedestrian walkways, which align directly to the main entry points of that main anchor building. So it's a very direct shot. And it's, we think it's very safe. And we work with staff in particular to even get this access point shoved further back so that when cars come into the intersection here, that they actually can see them and they have to come to a stopping point. Actually, they won't stop. They'll come through. But it gets the pedestrians, so there's plenty of room for them to see. And we worked with the city engineering on that particular issue, which is why that shows up. Moving on, the next thing is, I want to talk a little bit about the landscape plan. Now, the plans you have in our packets are labeled L1 through L4. There's an overall landscape plan. There's detailed quadrants, which will show you each one of the detailed plans by species and genus and location. And a couple of things I just wanted to bring to your attention was that today, there's really no real trees to speak of on site. There's just crop farming going out there. And when we developed this project, the total landscape area in the parking lot alone will be 12.2%. And the standard is currently at 10% in the city's code. The parking lot island spacing is another one we kind of talked about, you guys talked about when you were deliberating on the new landscape standards. We're at about an average of one space per every 9.4 spaces on average. And the standard right now is one per every 15 spaces. So we really, we actually meet that. We exceed it by a good bunch. The interesting thing is, we've got a lot of trees in this site. We've got 263 trees that we're going to be planting on this site, which equates to one for every 430 square feet. And it doesn't include any trees underneath the power lines because we're not allowed to really put trees there due to the level of the wires coming across there. The other thing we compared this to was, what about the canopy cover? Because that's something you guys were concerned about with the new code, which this is not subject to. But we took a look at it and we actually are, 31% canopy coverage following your methodology. And the code requires us to be at 30% for the new canopy coverage. Another interesting bit about the new code is that the current amount of shrubs we have are about 3,500 shrubs on the site. And the new standard would actually have somebody planting about 1,800 shrubs. So I think we got a lot more shrubs than one could think that your new standards are put on the ground here. Finally, we're actually endorsing your visual corridors for 12 and Sherwood Road at 15 feet wide, which will be all landscaped. And then along Langer Farms Parkway, another 10 feet of landscape zone. We've accounted for that in the plans in front of you. Next slide is to start talking about buildings and building materials and colors. And it's something that our architects and ourselves really took to a passion because we started looking at many of the different projects we have, and how can we make this one special and different for this area and make people feel proud of it. And we'll be using a lot of board and batten, lap siding, stucco, brick, split face CMU, smooth face CMU, shingles, metal roofs, wooden beams, ledge stone bases, awnings and canopies. And so this is just a sampling of our materials, color sheets. And we have the canopies, we have three different canopy colors for the fabric canopies. We've got a really nice looking ledge stone. We've got wooden beams, which are supporting canopies. We've got colors in the beige colors, but they're not all the same. Each of the buildings are not all the same. We've got specialized brick, which we've picked out, which are different combinations of tumbled brick that you see here. And then we've teamed it up with actual metal roofing, which the metal roofing is actually different colors to be actually paired up with the different types of bricks. So that each one of the buildings that has peaks on it, has that, some unity, but there's also differences between them. So when you walk around, you're going to see those differences and you're going to really notice it. Even the anchor building picked up on the ledge stone along the bases of the building, along their whole main vestibles where the entries are. They have standing seam metal roof where the big gables come out over the main entry points. Their building facade is undulating, or it mirrors different segments instead of being all one contiguous color. There's changes in the colors, which are using a different, we've got brown, Dromedary Camel, and for better by metal arc, somebody creates these names. But there is differences, is the point, which instead of just being all contiguous. Moving on, we wanted you to take a peek at what this could look like with an artist's rendering of what we did with, we actually had some digital photographs created from the actual plans that we have to date. So we have all the building elevations and we had some sections. And we want to take a look at what this would look like. From somewhat of an aerial view, this is looking from, basically if you're over in Target's parking lot, you can see the foreground. Oops, let me go back. Got the wrong button. This is Langer Farms Parkway right here. The roundabout sits right here. Century Drive is to this corner over here. We have 12 and Sherwood Road to the top of the page over here. And so we have, again, the restaurant building sits here, the bank, Building D, we call it, with the plaza area over here, Building E with another big plaza, and F and the anchor building set back with the main vestibles and the variation in architecture. Moving on, we have, coming down to the ground, we have the main entrance with what we call the key I-beam entrance, looking at the north side of Building D, which exhibits the metal roofs there, the canopies we have with the awnings, the outside seating with ample walkway, acknowledging the beautiful walkway, which is out there today. On the south side of Building D is a really nice spot, which shows the architecture we have going on with, again, the undulations in the building, the changes up that you'd see. We did this because we want to take a little bit harder look at what you see from the public side. So we added these in addition to the ones which we have in our application packet. And these are at a higher resolution, a lot more detail. They took the actual material boards and plans and really took it to task. Next one is looking at the corner with Buildings E and F, and that's the prime corner, which is about, that plaza is about 4,200 square feet in size, big enough for some really neat activities to take place. And again, you see lap siding, you see the board and batten. Next thing I'm going to talk to is off-site improvements, which was talked quite a bit about with Brad. And our off-site improvements, I just wanted to show you a snapshot. And maybe I can answer a few of the questions which are coming across in terms of timing. We have, I'm going to start in the upper right-hand corner. We have the regional stormwater facility, which we will be building, and the city will be approving. And that has to be built and constructed before any occupancy permit is granted for anything in Phase 7. to be built and constructed before any occupancy permit is granted for anything in Phase 7. We will also be extending Century Drive across, which is in the middle, just to the south side of our project. That, again, has to be done, completed, and accepted by the city before occupancy permits are granted for anything in Phase 7. Now, the frontage improvements, which we talked about, and you raised some very good questions about, the county has looked at that, and they have given us an option to pay an in-lug fee. And we will be dedicating land ahead of time to the county for that improvement to take place through a subdivision application, which has been before this body, I think, not long ago. And so, we're not sure whether anything has to be done there at this point. Jason has just confirmed that they are expecting to do a taper along this area. We would have to confer with the county exactly what they want and get the plans approved through them, and it makes sense potentially to do an in-lug fee here. The round dot is, there's the all-way traffic signal there, which, again, the county could allow us to pay an in-lug fee. We're thinking that the only way to control the timing of when we want to open for this project is actually to design it, have the county review it and approve those construction plans, and for us to construct at the same time that we construct at Langer Farms North Parkway, which will take it all the way to Highway 99. In addition to that, there are the two barbell-looking shapes that we have on our screen, which are actually just graphic representations of the, the lane extensions that were conditioned to do by ODOT on Highway 99. Those conditions are a timetable, again, if in fact, we're told at least through our traffic consultants and confirmation with the cities, that if in fact, the misstep project, which is for the widening of Langer Farms Parkway along this, I mean, excuse me, Twalton Sherwood Boulevard and here, if that was actually completed, there wouldn't be the need to actually extend the initial lane queues here, but if, the issue is timing. If we want to open up and we want to open up, and that project is still going on, we need to actually have construction plans reviewed approved to actually do those improvements within the existing right-of-way that's there today. I think with that, I think that's what I've got to tell you on the off-site improvements. It was, it was related to an awful, to our TIA report, which is scoped out with the city, Washington County and ODOT, and it's been reviewed by them as well. And we're working on the particular condition was talked about, well, what if you have a different use classification other than shopping center? And we, we believe that we actually meet the intent of those other uses, but we need to demonstrate that to staff. We want some time to actually work with staff to show them the different scenarios with those different ITE use classifications, so we could use some additional days between this hearing and hopefully a next hearing to deal with that, one condition, which will actually make it clear. We, we know we meet it, but we want to, we want to actually have you guys know it upfront that we actually meet those conditions. So, that leads me to criterion of approval. We have a site plan criteria of approval. We believe we've met the conditions of approval and all the criterion. We did ask for a 9.2 percent parking reduction, where we could have asked up to 25 percent. And part of the swing in our reduction is whether the stormwater pond is removed or not. We're pretty confident the stormwater pond will get removed, so we probably would not have to ask for a full 9.2 percent, but that gives us flexibility, doesn't hamstring us, and it doesn't shortchange to put parking out on the streets anywhere at all. We also know that we've applied for a conditional use permit for outside sales to accrue on the north side of the anchor store, and that is something which we feel is necessary because in order for someone to perform outside sales anything longer than a certain time period, they need to keep coming back in for different time periods. And the 30 spaces that they're looking at aren't included in our parking calculations, and it won't, again, hamstring us in dealing with parking counts. And it seems like a reasonable use to ask for upfront. And it's in a great location, it's not really impacting anybody out in the outer world or neighboring properties or anywhere else at all. And so, finally, we ask that you could accept staff's approval of the application and have it approved pending a continuance request, which is held to leave the wrecker open. And I'm going to have our attorney on the rebuttal actually respond to that. With that, that's my presentation for you.
How much time did they reserve for rebuttal?
Looks like they took, I'm trying to do my quick math, about 17 minutes?
So, 13 minutes remaining for rebuttal. Okay. All right, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
And again, if you're interested in testifying, if you can fill out a blue sheet, that would be great, and I'll call on folks that I have sheets from, R. James Claus.
Okay. She said she filled out a sheet already, but she has to leave, so that's...
Are we timing or are we not timing tonight?
We are timing, Jim.
What about the speaker, the Graymore Langer boy?
I'm sorry, in case you didn't hear, they consumed 17 minutes for reserve, 13 minutes for rebuttal.
How much?
They consumed 17, retained 13 for rebuttal.
And who do we believe on that, the clock or somebody else?
Uh, the clock.
Oh, I didn't see the clock running.
Well, there's a clock on the wall behind you, and we were keeping track of it, and we had staff keeping track of it as well.
All right. Robert James Claus, 222-111-Southwest Pacific Highway. A long time ago, I was working in Franklin, Tennessee, and I heard from Home Depot that we had a Home Depot in Sherwood. I said, "That's not possible." Well, then it turned out we did have a Home Depot on Art Spade's place that Brenna King Langer had taken an option on. Now, it was light industrial, so they called it a lumberyard, they deemed it complete, and after 120 days, they sued the council, and some way miraculously, ODOT gave them a light. Bingo! Our zoning didn't mean anything, that was light industrial, wasn't supposed to be there. But John Bormet was fair and famous for that, so please tell me this is not a similar end run. Now, there's a number of things you can do, because I believe that this is conspiracy restrained trade. I believe it goes right to the very nature of competition in the marketplace. I don't think you can compete against this kind of corruption. So, you're going to get the big chance to tell me I'm a liar. Now, first, let me tell you, $4,000 appeal to appeal this. Now, luckily, we've peeled the parceling up to Luba, so they really can't do anything until they get the parcel through. But it's $4,000 appeal. You have limited time to appeal, and the staff's report reminds me of Booger Williams when I was in Billings, Montana, in the Golden Gloves. Boy, he could talk a great fight, but he didn't make it past the first round. But Booger could talk. You're going to have 2,900 cars at a minimum if it's Walmart, 8,000 to 14,000. That's why Kittleson is kittle-ing away. Now, what makes me suspicious, and I'm terribly sorry because I would never question the motor or Langer or Mays or anybody, why is it that this has to be parceled? I'll tell you why, because Walmart won't buy it. Chuck Martinez wrote them a letter of intent at $15 a foot when Mays drove them off of Shannon and Broadhurst. No, he said, "You're going to build any place, you're going to build on the Langers." That's not restraining trade, that's wise policy for a mayor that can't find employment. So, you can prove to me I'm wrong, because you can call Kevin Sweet at Walmart and say, "Are you going to buy that, and is this, with Barry Kane back here, he's there, some kind of clever tax swap?" They put up the building, Walmart pays for the RV, if you can call it that, what we should really call it is the satellite, and then they make a tax-deferred exchange, and we get a Walmart without a Home Depot hearing. And that's exactly what's going on here tonight. This staff, who has a vested interest in the outcome, because they spent all of our other money, have to find some way to get something in there that can borrow a bond, and so does our contractor turning over here, we can't pay him. Now, you can convince me I'm wrong. You got a two-week continuance, which we've asked for, I'll ask for again, just call Walmart and say, "Do you have any kind of interest in Sherwood? Call Chuck Martinez down in Southern Oregon." And I bet you that you don't get a denial, and ask him tonight, stand up here and deny it. Now, if that's what they're doing, go back to your 1995 code, and this is no more a PUD than Donald Duck is Einstein. This is simply a clever end run that a contract attorney has advised somebody how to do, this is not a city attorney. And you know why I say that? Because the parking ratios fit Walmart, and the size fits Walmart. And this is an anchor tenant? That's a misuse of the word, it's almost, it's disgusting. Anchor tenants are built in a different kind of shop. This is a freestanding mass merchandiser that is a category killer. And anybody that would call this an anchor tenant is either stupid or a liar or some combination of both. This is a mass merchandiser, and I'll bet you anything. Now, they can just come up and say, "We will certify here tonight Walmart won't be there, we will certify no mass merchandiser will be there, we'll certify it's going to be standalone." Get me that certification, and the lawsuit we're planning for conspiracy restraint trade won't have to help them because it's not happening.
Jim Haynes.
Thank you, Chair Allen and Commissioners. My name is Jim Haynes, my address is 22300 Southwest Schmelzer Road, Sherwood 97140. I'm here as a private citizen, but also a person who's spent a lot of time advocating and working for Sherwood's future, for job opportunities, for economic development. I've submitted my comments in letter form to you, but I'd like to read a couple of excerpts, if you don't mind. Further and ongoing development of Sherwood's retail business community is fuel both for the local economy and a way to develop Sherwood's human capital. Large retail stores will draw local, area, and regional shoppers to our community. These are customers who will seek other goods and services that are not offered simply by those, by that single store or the combination of stores there. These shoppers may also buy gasoline, sandwiches, and other specialty items as well from other Sherwood businesses. That adds to our tax base, helps other businesses survive and grow, as well as advertises Sherwood as a great place to live and work. The retail ripple effect will mean jobs, especially for young people, students and part-timers. Many, and many could be perfect for first-time, first-time job for high schoolers, seasonal work for college students, or maybe even part-time work for young mothers. Those are jobs that support college or trade school education, or can help a family get ahead. These are jobs that give young people something constructive to do while learning skills useful for a lifetime and new opportunities for all employable residents of Sherwood. Now, because there's some question of my right to be able to advocate for Sherwood economic development, I've attached a list of my involvement in various boards and volunteer activities over the last about 25 years for your review. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Leanna Knudsen.
Leanna had to leave, but she left a letter in favor of, and we'll enter that into the record as Exhibit T.
All right. Do we have any other blue sheets?
Wes Friedman, is he?
Wes, Wes Friedman?
My name is Wes Friedman, I live at 21315 Southwest Baylor Way, Sherwood. I'm in favor of this development. I think from the presentation they gave, it's a beautiful development, has lots of opportunities for nice shops, places, you know, I'd love to wake up in the morning, walk down, have a cup of coffee, get a pastry. There's so many different opportunities there for jobs, tax revenue, putting land to use. It'll be a great area when you come down Twalton Sherwood Road into Sherwood. I mean, right now, you've got DEQ to look at and an empty field. It'll be add to the value of Sherwood, the desirability, it's going to do nothing but drive everybody's property values up. And I think it's something we should approve. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have for blue sheets? Does anyone else wish to testify? If the people in the back of the room hanging on to their blue sheets can figure out who's actually going to go last, then we'll, we'll be good.
Susan Claus, 222-111-Southwest Pacific Highway. I have a couple comments, and then I submitted to have a, because I have some other information to provide for the record. One of my points is, this is industrial land. When we're talking about part-time jobs for kids and for the low-end retail workers, the intent of that 55 acres, which, it's, to me, it's a shame. We've converted it to retail, it was there supposed to be for jobs, and they were supposed to be for jobs that could support families. That's, I think that that's a loss that we don't deserve as a city. The other, one of the other points I wanted to make is, when Langer Parkway went in, it was an $8 million project, there was $4 million that was provided by the county, and then the city provided $4 million plus minus change, whatever. The staff got 20 percent cut off of that. And part of my problem is, $1 million came out of urban renewal to put in that road as a justification of part of urban renewal, hey, we'll enhance the downtown. This is concentrating, you know, I mean, the, the Old Town area, I think, is going to have problems with this. But my point is, we were facilitating a set of improvements, and I, I think that money should be tracked. I think that $1 million should go back into the urban renewal fund. There's plenty of money out here, given this design with these, the retailers that we're talking about and the different buildings here, that, whatever money that they're going to put in lieu of, or their traffic fees, my proposal is, we're already having trouble getting enough money for our art center, give the $1 million back to the urban renewal, and let's have a little bit of money to spend in Old Town again. The other problem I have is, in the 2010 development agreement, the city of Sherwood said, because they didn't want to get in a lawsuit with the Langers, that we were going to provide, again, from urban renewal money, up to $500,000 to punch through Century Drive for the difference between a parking lot, which is what the, the Langers bargained for in their original PUD. Now, they've made a huge change, and now they're specifically punching that road through, and it's not an obligation of the PUD, the city didn't want to go fight with them about it. And so, our urban renewal funds, the staff is promoting the idea that we spend $500,000, and that difference, the Langers get credited for whoever's developing, whether it's Barry, whether, whatever it is. $500,000 additional from the million going out of urban renewal, and right now, we just had an announcement in the paper for our $2.5 million art center, they've already cut out $400,000 because the bids came in too high. The whole reason in 2000 that we were initiating urban renewal is we were going to build a beautiful art center. Here it is, the last project in line, everything gets in front of it, and it's a death by 1,000 cuts again. Whether we even get to build that, even a semblance of what we had planned, it, it's tragic because it's not going to happen, and we don't have money the way that we have money coming in. We have $20 million being spent by Twalton Sherwood Road coming in, and the Langer Farms Parkway. All that does is enhance the bottom line either for the sale price to the Langer PUD based on public improvements that are benefiting that PUD. My point is, there should, I mean, be some kind of, at least a moral obligation, let's put a little bit back in the town. We know that we have a problem with the art center, we know that there's a need there, and this is a tremendous, millions and millions of dollars benefit that we've given in zoning, meticulous... dollars benefit that we've given in zoning meticulously and very deliberately over the last year. You guys have all been here. All the code improvement projects that have put new code language in that now this site plan is benefiting from. Let's have them be part of the town. Let's have them do more than the minimum for us as a community. And for goodness sakes, what's the hurt to say who that anchor tenant is or who that mass merchandiser is? If it is a category killer, please let us have our businesses have some preparation so they can close up shop. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Eugene Stewart.
Eugene Stewart, P.O. Box 534, Sherwood, Oregon. I own property in Sherwood, live outside of town. One of my concerns is, is I've, I guess my background is, I've lived here since about '46, seen a lot of changes go through. 99W go from two lanes to four lanes. On the traffic side, one of the problems, I don't think that has been approached, is a fact that if you're a truck coming down 99W northbound towards Taggart, you have two possibilities to get over to I-5. One is to Walton Sherwood Road. You could go down to 194th and go back to Walton Sherwood Road. The next place that you can get on I-5 is on the far end of Taggart, just before you enter Portland. And that's by design. Trucks are not allowed to go across to anyplace else. So, how is truck traffic figured into this? I read one place where 2% to 3% of the traffic is heavy trucks. So you're telling me for every 100 cars, there's, you know, only three trucks coming down the road? When you look at the other end of Walton Sherwood Road, when you get into Walton, especially in the afternoons, that's almost 30%, 40% trucks sitting there trying to get onto, towards I-5. And it's a heavy congestion. In the mornings, when I go to work, I find that especially from Monique back to Sunset, traffic's queuing up farther and farther back down during heavy time. You look at the traffic in Old Town, what is this going to do to the traffic? Are people going to, once the road gets out to 99W, will they try to turn at Home Depot and cut through Old Town just to get home? That's not going to help downtown. Yes, you've got a lot of traffic coming through, but if 95% of it's just driving through, it doesn't help the businesses downtown. And I don't think that has been answered. Project overall looks not too bad. The question does come up, where have you replaced industrial property someplace else in town? How do you, how have we balanced things out? We seem to be concentrating all, putting all our eggs in one basket in one spot. I don't know particularly if that's a good idea or not. But that seems to be the biggest problem that I see with this, is that, especially Walton Sherwood, if they're going to run it partway down to five lanes and then narrow it back down to two lanes, you know, how's that going to help? Are we going to have more traffic? You know, they're going to queue it up, but then when it gets out onto 99W, you know, where are they going to park until they can go down the road? And like I say, I work up on Barber, and it appears to me that there's as much traffic on Barber now as there was before they built I-5. And that's just working its way back. One of the problems I see with Sherwood's transportation plan, there's no belt line system to get around the town. It should be at least five lanes, four sides around the city, so people can get around easily and alleviate a lot of these problems. One of the things I would like to see as a condition is, let's take a look at the traffic six months after this is in and see, are they right or are they wrong? And if they're wrong, how do we, how can we fix it? It's not their problem then, but we need to look at it in a progressive way so that we don't keep burying ourselves. Thank you.
Jennifer Harris.
Sorry, I'm very nervous if I-
That's fine. Just give us your name and address.
My name's Jennifer Harris. I live at 21484 Southwest Rollick Avenue. And my concern is the building, the anchor store, which, again, the elephant in the room, if it's a large discount store or not. Regardless, there's going to definitely be an increase in traffic with an anchor store of that size. Logic can weed out who we're talking about. And with outdoor sales, things like fertilizer, garden things are put in that area, that becomes a pollution problem. How are they going to handle pollution? If they have things out there that are harmful for our environment, harmful for our water system, how are they going to handle that? What do they have in place? And do we trust them to even do that based on previous records of whoever might be there? Generally, with big box stores, especially the lower ones, percentage-wise, crime goes up, particularly outside of the stores. That's a concern for me as a citizen and as a mom. And also, taking into account this store, this anchor store that may go in, how is that going to affect our other businesses in Sherwood? The other grocery stores, the other retail stores? Is it going to do us any good if we fill this store with a great, wonderful, cheaper grocery store, cheaper clothing outlet, whatever it is? But if then Albertsons has to close or Safeway has to close, what are we going to do with those spots? And what do we do with all of those employees who are making $12 an hour, but now they get to go work at this small store for $8 an hour? All of those are concerns for me, and I realize we don't know who it is, but it's still the big picture. And yes, a high school student could go work there, but there's plenty of other places they can go work to. I think that we need to keep in mind that local stores keep their money local. It's generally brought through our local system up to eight times. A big box store doesn't keep their money local. They tend to send it back to their corporate office, and that too benefits from that store and that money that our Sherwood citizens are putting into that store. It doesn't tend to come back into our communities. We don't see that going to our Relay for Lives. We don't see that going into our own community and our own spaces and our own families. We see it going into the families in Arizona or Chicago or wherever their corporate office is. And so, all of those are my concerns with this big box store and thinking about the traffic and the pollution and the things that are glaringly obvious, but then the small things too that affect our families. Thank you.
If you could hang on just a quick second. I don't usually do this, but I've got one quick question I want to ask. It's like, sorry. Sherwood with Target, Sherwood without Target, is Sherwood worse without Target than it was before we had Target?
Is it, okay, so is it worse?
Is Sherwood a worse community because we have Target than we were before we had Target? Do you think?
I don't know if I would say worse. I would say different. And I'm not super excited about different. I really love Sherwood. I really love who we are. I love how it is. I also, there's a lot of other people who love it. We've been rated several best towns to live in, best towns to raise family in. I think if you get especially a discount store, I think those awards go away. I think the appeal of Sherwood goes away. I disagree with property values going up, right, sometimes in general vicinity of that store, but overall, if you look statistically across the country, stores like this that go in and large retail stores, it doesn't have a positive effect on the community that's already there. Does the community change over the next 10 years and things different? And you can look at it at that time and say, yeah, it's going fine, sure. But if you talk to a citizen that was there before it was there, are they going to say it was positive? I don't know that to be true.
Great. Thank you. Jason DePay. Did I get that remotely close?
Yeah, you did, actually. Most people don't, most people say dopey. So I have to apologize in advance. I'm not a public speaker. I get quite nervous. So, my name's Jason DePay. I live at 18517 Southwest Colfelt Lane in Sherwood, Oregon. I just want to say, I do support the economic growth of Sherwood. I do support a development project for the Langer site, however, not the one that calls for that anchors, that anchor store. I enjoy many of the projects that were mentioned by the developer tonight. However, I ask that the city council hold off on making a decision based on the fact that we have an unspecified anchor tenant. We've talked about traffic concerns, and I, that's one of my primary concerns. However, my secondary primary concern is the fact that we don't know who the anchor tenant is, and Walmart does. And all of my research tend to have developers and attorneys that come into cities, and they said it's an unspecified anchor tenant. They won't clarify who it is until the very last minute, but then it's usually too late to keep them out. I do have an MBA, and I will say that going to college, pretty much every professor I had used Walmart as an example of how not to run a company and how not to treat a community. I want you guys to think about the impact it's going to have on our local businesses. I want you to think about the impact it's going to have on downtown. Just a quick note here, for every job that Walmart creates, it costs a community 1.5 jobs that they lose elsewhere. It's going to increase lost wages over time. It's going to decrease wages. We're going to have poor working conditions with Walmart, inadequate healthcare, and about 70% of employees leave within the first year. I lived in California, so I saw a lot of the aging Walmarts as they began deteriorate. The communities deteriorated around them. Crime also increased. I've moved to Sherwood. I love this small town. It's part of the reason I moved here, and I don't want Walmart to come in here and jeopardize that. So, all I do is ask that you don't make a decision tonight, that you guys determine which stores are going to be moving into our community. And I want you to think about the long-term economic impact that Walmart might have on our community. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. That again exhausts all the blue sheets I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify tonight? Yeah, come on up. Just, you need to come to the table though. And if you could give us your name and address, that would be great.
Charles Boyle, 21426 Southwest Masseteris. Before we testify, we're Exhibit O, I believe. I wasn't sure if that was separate from this right now.
Yeah, we've got your exhibit, but you're free to testify.
Okay. Do we come up later? Exhibit O, does that get called up later? Or is this our own chance?
No, Exhibit O is in, is in our written record.
Okay. So, to go along with that, we've, I spent two days reviewing the proposal and found several things that I found to be deficient. The developer states that they have met all the conditions, or that conditions of approval, should they be approved, that they would meet that. Basically, what I found is, where to start, drive-throughs. It stated by the city that drive-through lane should not be between the buildings and the residential, or the streets around. Each of the drive-throughs, as opposed to be between the building and the street. The onsite circulation proposes for convenient pedestrian access. Drive-throughs, in my opinion, are inconvenient for pedestrian access. If you have been in a large parking, parking area and tried to access multiple different stores and go back to your car, that's going to be quite inconvenient. CCNRs says the applicant will prepare covenants, conditions, and restrictions, but they have stated that they will be provided to the staff following approval. I find it more necessary to have the CCNRs provided before approval as a condition of approval, so that things like peak hour of operation for each business parcel could be actually determined based on use as maybe outlined or restricted in the CCNRs, so that you could actually determine, do they qualify for their 9% whatever parking reduction? What else? The city stated that, in the 95 PUDs, that they're looking for a front porch society, that this is supposed to be a main gateway into the City of Sherwood and to Old Town. A big box store like this, as proposed and suggested by everyone else, is most likely to be a Walmart. Fred Meyer has already purchased land over by the Providence Development. Wincott has said they're not coming in. There's not many more options besides Walmart. Not many people say, oh, hey, look, this Walmart, it's pretty fancy. That's a nice place. I like to go and hang out there. They show up, do their shopping, take care of whatever they need to, and get out of town. A lot of thieves have, during studies on Walmarts who have been interviewed, have stated that they see Walmart as a 24-hour opportunity for theft. As we go on, states that building shall be located adjacent to and flush with the street, subject to landscape corridor and setbacks. Adjacent to and flush means directly contiguous with, minus those borders of shrubbery or trees or sidewalk. The anchor store does not meet that. It stated that it's inappropriate because the size is too big. Well, if it's too big to go there, then maybe it should be smaller. This, you know, it states it should be adjacent to or flush. I don't see, just because it's large, that that's any reason to adjust this restriction. We also have the Wilsonville Shopping Center is very similar to this one. They have a big box store, you could call it Fred Meyer, and they're building codes for the traffic analysis. They use an 820 along with, an 820 shopping center along with a Fred Meyer separate from that, whereas this development, they use an 820 for the entire complex minus the drive-throughs. The 820 draws on average 3.73 trip units per, trips per unit. A big box store is, what's most likely going to go in here would draw more like 5, 4.49, or, yeah, 4.99, 4.5, using different codes. If they use a conservative estimate on this, they'd use the more appropriate code. And I think with just that, that basic difference, that would put them from their 760 or whatever, well over the 847, closer to 9, mid 900s or 1,000. And I think that's probably most of what I've got right now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone, anyone else wish to testify tonight on this application? Brad, are you going to?
I need to give them a blue sheet because we don't have that.
Oh, okay, got it. All right. Anyone else wish to testify on this application tonight? In that case, we'll go ahead and turn to applicant rebuttal if they choose to do so. And I believe we had 13 minutes reserved for rebuttal?
Yes.
13 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, would we be able to take about a five or six-minute break before we present the rebuttal?
Yeah, I think a break would be welcome up here as well. So we'll go ahead and recess until five minutes till.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and reconvene if we could. And we will move to rebuttal. There are 13 minutes available for rebuttal, and since I see new faces, if we could get new names and new addresses, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Seth King. I'm a land use attorney with Perkins Coie. The address is 1120 Northwest Cootch Street, 10th floor in Portland, and here on rebuttal on behalf of the applicant tonight. With me is Chris Bremer from Kittleson Associates, and he will introduce himself when he makes his remarks just as soon as I finish.
It's the two guys in the room with ties.
Yes, there are, there are two of us, indeed. So, thank you for the opportunity to address you. We heard a number of comments from our good neighbors, and we do appreciate everyone's time and attention to this project tonight. You did hear quite a bit of testimony, but much of it was based on speculation. There was not much of any of it that was based upon substantial evidence, and much of it was also not directed at applicable approval criteria. And just to address a few specific points, I know that there was quite a bit of talk about the identity of potential tenants at the site. And of course, as staff noted, the identity of tenants is not an approval criterion for the city. And, Mr. Chairman, as you noted, the Planning Commission's decision must be based on approval criteria. Therefore, the identity of tenants, or even the speculative identity of tenants, can't be a basis to approve or deny the application. As the applicant indicated, they are working to try and identify tenants for the site and that wa- and that will come later in the event that the project's approved. You heard Mr. Claus speak about this being a conspiracy to restrain trade. That was purely based on speculation. There was no substantial evidence to support his arguments there. You also heard comments that this was industrial land and that this would be more appropriate for industrial uses. In fact, there is, as you know, an approved PUD here that allows the applicant to elect a variety of different uses. The applicant is vested for retail uses and the applicant is exercising that right to move forward on that at this time. This is, this is not a new election. It was done earlier in a development agreement which the city council has approved. There was discussion about the urban renewal district and about money coming out of the urban renewal district for road improvements. My understanding that this property is in the urban renewal district and therefore that development of it will generate additional ad valorem tax revenue which can fund urban development projects, urban redevelopment projects. So, in that regard, approval of the project will support the urban renewal district. There was discussion about the deal between the applicant and the city relating to Century Drive. Again, that is something that was negotiated and resolved in the amended and restated development agreement in that the applicant had agreed to take on certain improvements to Century Drive there that were not obligations the applicant originally had. And the applicant is fulfilling those obligations at this time. There was also testimony relating to impacts to existing small businesses. Again, this was speculative, particularly in light of the fact that the exact composition of the tenants in the site have not been identified. But in fact, you know, Graymore Development is an experienced developer. They would not be out here in Sherwood if the market weren't strong for a, for the retail market. So, they're confident that there is sufficient demand to support these new businesses and that should be indicative of, that there is demand to go around. And finally, a couple of points regarding Mr. Boyle's testimony at the end. He had expressed concern that the project as proposed would violate the city's drive-through standards as well as that the buildings were not built flush to the street. If we're understanding the criteria that he is referring to, they are in a section of commercial standards that are not applicable because the applicant is going under an alternative option of the commercial design matrix. And under that matrix, the applicant has, to demonstrate compliance with five different areas of commercial design and the applicant has demonstrated that. So, the short answer is those particular standards that he has identified are not applicable. We also understand that they are referenced as they, the applicant should do this and the applicant should do that and thus they're, they're not mandatory. Regarding the standard relating to, or I'm sorry, regarding Mr. Boyle's concern that no CCNRs had been submitted with the project, the specific standard that cited there doesn't require that the CCNRs be submitted at this time. So, and now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bremer to address the traffic issues that you heard. We would like to, at the end here, discuss the open record period. We understand that there has been a request there and we are supportive of a reasonable period for holding the record open and we can talk about that here at the end. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Okay. For the record, my name is Chris Bremer. Mailing address, 610 Southwest Alder, Suite 700, Portland, Oregon 97205. I'm a principal engineer with Kittleson and Associates and a licensed professional engineer in the state of Oregon. We prepared the traffic impact study for the site and the supplements that you've heard about this evening. That study was prepared in a collaborative effort, working with Washington County, the Oregon Department of Transportation, as well as city staff and their on-call traffic consultant DuCast Associates. It's a pretty extensive study, lot of traffic impacts and a lot of mitigations that you've heard about this evening. I think we've had a successful project working through those and the transportation system at the end, we believe will be better for those improvements. I want to respond to some specific questions that I heard. Some of them were from you. One in particular was what were the signal timing assumptions related to the ODOT signal out to Alton Sherwood Road? The traffic study is predicated on maintaining the existing signal timing pre-mistip project from the county. That's a requirement from ODOT. We're not allowed to change signal timing and influence things that way. So, the analysis is all based on the existing signal timing. There was a question of what in reality does that mean for me as I'm waiting to go westbound? How much longer is that queue going to be when the site's built out? With the initial build-out, we're forecasting that the peak 15 minutes of the peak hour, that westbound queue will grow by two to three car lengths. And so, you'll experience the delay you have today plus two or three car lengths in that worst, worst period. When the county's project comes online, which is anticipated in 2014, the modeling that is documented in the September 11th memorandum that we provided indicates, based on the county's modeling, that those queues will drop by over half. And so, you should be back to a situation where you're getting through on one or two cycles versus the two to three that you're experiencing now. There was a question about what the, how we accounted for truck and truck traffic. As documented in the traffic study, the truck traffic was all counted. The actual traffic counts separate passenger cars and heavy vehicles, trucks. So, we do know how many trucks are in the traffic stream and that is accounted for in the analysis, including the queuing analysis where we count for the length of trucks. There were some questions about, you know, did the study really look at the bigger picture? And if you look at that study, there's 21 study intersections in there. It is a pretty sizable study and very comprehensive from our perspective, again with the agencies all dictating to us which intersections to study. So, we are confident that we've covered that. There's been a lot of questions about trip generation and is IT 813, 820, a whole bunch of numbers. Sort of the simplistic way to boil this down, I'll give you an analogy. If you set up a bank account and you put $100 in it, you can withdraw that $100 in two $50 bills. You can do five $20 bills. You can do 10 $10 bills. Bottom line, you can't draw, withdraw more than you put in that bank account. And that's how we've approached this traffic study. We've essentially set up a bank account with a certain number of trips and we can't exceed that number of trips. Now, there are various ways that those trips may be used. My experience over the last several, three years in particular, most of our clients don't know who their end tenants are. So, we sized the traffic study, taking on what we think is the reasonable worst-case scenario that could be built. We set up that trip number and as you've seen from staff indications, there will be an assurance from the city that we don't go over that trip number. So, we're confident that we have it covered and we'll be working with staff during this conditioning period to further document that. The closing thought I'd offer for you is, we prepared the traffic study for Target. There were questions about the Target traffic study at the time. I think most people would acknowledge at this point that that site has worked pretty well and the traffic impacts were consistent with what we forecast. As affirmed, Kittleson has been in the community for over 25 years. We work on situations for private developers. We also work on contract from time to time for the Oregon Department of Transportation, Washington County, and in some cases even the city. So, we approach these studies from a very balanced perspective. My ethical responsibility is with any engineer is to present the facts and provide you with information that you can base your decision on. So, I offer that and would be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
There appear to be none.
Well, no, fine. So, when, when we start talking about, you know, increasing our queue for the, for the traffic and we take an additional two or three more car, car lengths we have to wait and stuff, does that put us into LOS category F then at that point?
No, it does not. The, the operating standards in terms of level of service are still met. What it means is that queue on the westbound increases. Where you see that coming to a mitigating condition is with ODOT's condition. They've said, okay, you're increasing the northbound left beyond the storage is there. So, we need you to either increase that storage so the storage is there upon your opening or else wait for the county's project so that they provide the storage. So, bottom line is we're mitigating the queue storage to meet what's required and we are meeting the city's operating standards.
And then, going back to the trip numbers, you know, I know you guys are using conservative numbers for daily average trips that are coming in and out and so that we don't exceed that bank account that we have our maximum. What happens if we do an overdraw?
Typically, what would be required is additional traffic analysis to document what the additional impacts of that additional trips are, further mitigations required, does the queuing need to happen? So, the way the conditions are written right now, they would be, the city would be requiring additional analysis if you exceed that bank account.
And who's responsible for those additional analysis?
The applicant would be required to complete an additional supplemental study to be scope and everything determined again by the county, the city, and the state in coordination with each other.
And who's responsible for measuring that? To, to make sure there is a follow-up?
So, when the, when the final tenants are known, we will be asked to provide documentation of what the trip generation of those unit, those uses are compared to what the traffic study assumptions are. And that would be reviewed by the agencies to determine their consensus. What we're trying to do, aiming to do over the next two weeks, is provide that documentation upfront so it's in the record and hopefully this isn't an issue because the technical basis will be there and everybody will have had a chance to look at it.
So, just some clarification here is, in your, in your study, you refer to, you talk about the IT code and all that maximum stuff and stuff, numbers and stuff. And you always refer to, you're referring to a shopping center. So, we're assuming that we're going to have not a major superstore then, is what I'm assuming here.
So, the, the trip generation assumptions are based on a shopping center. IT defines a shopping center as an integrated commercial facility with, with multiple pads and business uses. The Target that we did next door was treated as a shopping center with then some of the pads broken out into fast food and the different supplemental uses. So, we've assumed that for now. If there's a scenario that comes back and the shopping center use is no longer appropriate, it needs to move to one of those other IT designations, we would rerun the trip generation with that and confirm whether or not we still are within the, the bank account of trips that we've set up. And that again is what we're going to be trying to do.
Is it reasonable for us to see what that would look like?
Yes. What we're going to be doing is providing that during this open record period.
So, let me see if I can translate that into what I'm thinking is the process. What you've done is you've, you've today given us sort of hypothetical trip generation numbers based on a mix of tenants that are along the lines that have been talked, a, a bank and a fast food and small retail and a big retail.
Correct.
And that gets you a blended number that's within our standards and, and you're saying that if it were to come in instead with five fast food, you need, would need to recalculate the numbers based on that and could or couldn't do it based on the, to use your analogy, whether it overdraws. But what you're hoping to do in the open record period is to, to be more specific with those numbers to begin with rather than the, rather than the blended numbers. Is that, have I got that right?
Basically, what we're going to do is there's been some specific questions about what happens if you have a discount superstore fitting IT definition. So, we're going to provide the trip generation of, if the main tenant were a discount superstore, what would that trip generation all look like so that you can compare side-by-side these different scenarios?
So, one of the things that's attractive to me about the application are the curb-tight pad developments around the perimeter. Is, is one possible outcome that the trip generation of the anchor tenant is too large to allow for all of the pad development? Does some of the pads need to be eliminated?
We're going to run through the trip generation, but the expectation that I have at this point is that we would still have the pads. We'd size the trip generation with the shopping center such that it could evolve to other uses. You know, it's pretty typical for sites to, what we thought was going to be a bank turns out to be two fast foods or different combinations. So, bottom line is I expect to come back with essentially the same site plan and say, treat the anchor tenant with a different land use. Here's the new trip generation. It's still less than or equivalent to what was originally assumed.
All right. Thanks very much. But don't you go anywhere because I think we're going to talk about dates and we'll need tolling on the 120 days, I suspect. So, Brad, do you have dates that you want to talk about?
Excuse me. So, the 120-day deadline is December 8th, 2012. We have some limitations here because the council has between now and the end of the year, three meeting dates. So, under the 120-day rule, we have to have all our local appeals exhausted by that time. So, if you extend the record, you can obviously continue it to date certain. You can go, two weeks would be October 9th hearing and then four weeks would be the October 23rd. The two weeks would give us, Bob's out on vacation this week. So, it'd give us a very limited amount of time to coordinate with the applicant on getting any type of resolution to the traffic scenario with the city engineer involved and we'd prefer that he be involved. The second option is the seven, seven, and seven and the applicant would give the final seven, their final rebuttal and we would hold that hearing on October 23rd. What that means is if you make a decision on October 23rd or choose to continue it again at the applicant's request, we'd have to ask them to toll the 120-day clock because we have to have the decision made. We have 14 days for somebody to file an appeal. And then because it's an appeal of this caliber two city council, we have to give a 20-day notice of the, of the new hearing. And it's a, it's a de novo hearing that goes to city council. So, it's a brand-new hearing and that's why the need for the, the notice. So, that would put us out at council on December 4th or 18th, provided they hold a meeting one of those two days because they're only going to be holding three and we're not sure which one they're going to hold on the 4th or the 18th. This is December 8th. If they held it on, if the council held it on December 4th, then there's the opportunity that they could be within the 120 days. But if they hold it out to December 18th, then we're kind of in a pickle where we need the applicant to toll 120-day rule.
All right. So, help me with the part where there's been a request to keep the record open at the same time that we're going to entertain new information on the record from the applicant. Do those relate to each other? Do they, does one need to occur before the other?
We would be in support of the seven, seven, and seven if they're going to do that. If there's new information coming in, then the public clearly needs an opportunity to respond to it and then the applicant can rebut to that.
All right. So, the applicant would get seven days to submit new information. The public would have seven days to react to that information. The applicant would have the final seven days to, to respond to the public?
Chris will chime in if I'm wrong, but the seven, first seven days is for anybody to submit any new evidence. And then seven days for anybody to respond to that evidence and then seven days for the applicant to provide their final rebuttal.
So, it sounds like the safest thing would be to see if the applicant's willing to toll the 120 days to December 18th, 10 days further than it is now and that allows for all of the scenarios that were?
I'm sorry. My recommendation is pass, December 18th is the council meeting.
So, December 19th?
Yeah. At the very least.
So, tolling to December 19th, is that something the applicant would entertain?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we would be willing to extend the city's review period through December 19th. And we would, I think our preferred mechanism here would be that you go ahead and close the public hearing tonight and then either move forward with, we would probably prefer a 14, 7, 7 schedule simply to allow us time to allow for Mr. Bob Galati to return to the office. And that's also consistent with. And that's also consistent with the neighbor citizen who has requested an open record period. So, it would be 14 days for new evidence from anyone, seven days for rebuttal evidence, seven days for final written argument. Then, we'll come back to you all for deliberations.
Okay. So, that was, the last question was if we're comfortable with closing public testimony, leaving it to written testimony only at this point? And then, following that kind of a schedule, does that work for folks? Alright, so basically, I'm going to go ahead and close the public. Whoop, I'm going to wait.
Please stand by.
Standing by.
So, I guess the council's second meeting in December is usually reserved for SWAT. Tom, do you want to chime in on that?
Well, so, we're shooting for the December, we're shooting for the December 4.
We can't do that with that, October 23. I guess, I mean, in the past, Tom, I don't know, we'd have to talk to Joe and the mayor and the folks that control the agenda of the council. I mean, typically, private development is an item that will move forward.
Well, I'm sorry, you're saying if we, you're saying if we do the 14-7-7, that that pushes us? But when does that bring us back to the Planning Commission?
I think it's actually the October 23 is the problem, not the 14-7-7, right?
Yeah, the 14-7-7 is fine. That still puts us at the October 23. What our problem is, is whether or not, we won't make the December 4 council hearing. And the council typically reserves their second meeting in December for, I don't remember, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities.
Well, so, I'm going to suggest that the 14-7-7, it sounds like it makes sense. We've already acknowledged the 9th is too soon. This gives the council three months to work it out. I'm comfortable with letting them figure out a meeting schedule that will allow them to hear an appeal if they need to. Unless someone sends up a big flare right now.
I don't think so. I think that's fair.
Alright, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And it sounds like we need a motion to hold the record open for 14 days with seven subsequent days for rebuttal and final arguments and continue to the 23rd.
It's 14, I'm sorry, Chair Allen. It's 14 days for all testimony, seven.
Oh, for rebut. For comment.
For comments on that new information. And then, seven for the final arguments from there.
And may I just ask for clarification, how you will be accepting the testimony and by what time on those days? Would you do it by email by 5:00 PM?
We typically accept information anyway that it's provided to us. And then, we would close the, we wouldn't accept anything after 5 o'clock on the end of those 14 days. And then, we would forward it on to the applicant and anybody else who requests it.
Okay, thank you.
And also, the motion would need to include tolling of the 120 days to December 19.
I don't know that you can move to toll the, the applicant, you're acknowledging that the applicant has told it. And be specific as to the date that the meeting will be heard on, which is October 23.
You got it, Jim?
October what?
23.
23. Okay. I move the Sherwood Planning Commission, close the hearing on the application for Langer Farms Phase 7 Shopping Center File Number SP12-05 and Conditional Use 12-02. Leaving the written record for submission and additional testimony open for 14 days for anyone to submit additional testimony, ending at 5:00 PM on October 9. Allowing seven days for anyone to rebut information received within the first 14-day period, ending at 5:00 PM on?
October 16.
October 16. And seven days for the applicant to submit final response with no new testimony permitted to be provided, ending at 5:00 PM on?
October 23.
October 23. And continuing the commission's deliberations on the matter until?
October 23.
Correct.
And acknowledging the applicant has agreed to the 120, to toll the 120 days to the 19th of December.
Was there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want the motion repeated? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that concludes.
Commissioner Allen, could you please just repeat those dates then, just for the public?
And so, so the?
Yes, so, it was the 14 days ending on the 9th at 5:00 PM. The additional seven days for rebut ending on the 16th. And the final seven days ending on the 23rd.
Which is germane to the app.
Which is, and then, the commission meeting on the 23rd.
And just for a process, so that you know what I think we're going to do and I know what you think we're going to do. The packets will be due seven days in advance. So, what we'll probably do is package everything that we received in the 14 days. Well, but we need to make sure that the public.
It'll be the first 21 days.
So, we will make sure that the information that's received in the first 14 days is available, probably on the website as well, you know, to the public. And then, anything received during the second seven days as well. And then, we'll package it all up to the Planning Commission the week before as part of your normal packets. You won't receive the final rebuttal until the evening of.
It'll be a walk-on, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Alright, any questions about that? Anything anyone wants to bring up? It's not on our regular menu. In that case, we are adjourned, thank you.